We ready? Y'all ready?
We ready.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's 6:00 PM. So I call the meeting in order for the Upson County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. If you would at this time, it's for eyes, for ears, followed by my pledge.
That's great. Heavenly Father, we come before you with humble hearts, proud heads. Thank you for all your blessings. We thank you for life, effort, and strength. Father, we ask that you bless all that are present tonight and bless each family that's represented. Father, we ask that you lead, guide us as we take care of the county business. Let us make decisions that are in the best interest of the community and that are pleasing in your sight. We ask that you protect and keep us safe from all hurt, harm, and danger, especially during this pandemic bad times. We ask that you not only bless those that are near and dear to us, but bless mankind everywhere. We ask this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Join in the pledge. My pledge, ladies and gentlemen. To the good life, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, before we get into tonight's agenda, I think we have changed what we're making the agenda.
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting to add an executive session for real estate discussion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so basically, just all those are there. All right, unanimous. Okay, also, for record, Commissioner Jones was unable to make it. We're dialing in. He had schedule conflicts, so he is... He's off duty for tonight. All right. So next to the agenda, our public hearings, we've got listed about four or five, so we'll get started. These are... First is a rezoning request from James Dawkins of Rockin' Georgia requesting rezoning of 1477 Barnesville Highway from AR to C2. There's a motion to open the public hearing. I have a motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor. And this public hearing is open. Is there any comments?
No comments.
There are no comments? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Uh huh.
Second?
Second.
All in favor. Unanimous. Okay, Mr. Courier?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is a fairly straightforward rezoning. It's basically a parcel that has lost its grandfathering and never did have the right zoning for the use that it's had in the past. You have to give Mr. Dawson his request for rezoning from AR to C2 for the purposes of marketing the property that he would like to sell. I guess he prefers to be a used car lot as it was when he owned it, but it's certainly depending on how you condition or don't condition any approval to C2 that would determine the type of use. But the historic use has been a used car lot. It's 1.217 acres. There is about approximately 864 square foot office slash garage building that was the home of the business. You see that the county records go quite far back for the business being located. Land uses in the area, you've got M1 in the city, a lot of IDA property. You also have AR, other property that's got the wrong zoning on it next door, and then you've got some M1 property in the county. Again, the request is from AR to C2. These are the descriptions of the type of uses you would expect to see in C2. The used car lot is not something you'd expect in the AR. Often, when you transition these type of uses, which are very different, you occasionally have problems where the building or any structures can't meet the requirements of the new zoning district, but in this case, you can see that the structure does meet the C2 requirements for setbacks, square footage, et cetera. While we don't have an exact building height or number of parking spots, I think if you look at the lot, you can see that those would meet the requirements also. By state law and our own ordinance, there are general review standards which the planning commission and the board of commissioners must use to evaluate these requests. These are those standards. And the staff analysis, basically, this is a commercial use that's been there for literally decades. It has lapsed for about a year and a half, two years where it was closed. Next door, you've got a gas company, you've got a collision repair shop, the bus doctor, you've got IDA property, similar type uses, similar intensity. This is along Haronsville Highway, which is a major corridor through the county. The C2 is certainly appropriate zoning and that will be unique. There's not C2 right next door, although there are certainly C2 type uses in the area. Mostly, you've got M1, which is the majority, certainly compatible with the C2. Because this is basically next to the city, there had to be a joint planning commission meeting, which was held in July, and there was recommended unanimous approval with no conditions for the rezoning. Of course, the county's planning commission met August 10th and considered this. They also unanimously recommended approval by a vote of 4-0. There was young member absent that evening. Go through the aerial. This is the aerial photograph of that joint garage slash office. You can see the zoning in the area, the M1. The dark line is the city boundary versus county jurisdiction. Photos of the building that's on site. Former used car lot, hangover. Property in the area, neighborhood property. Across the street. That concludes the staff presentation, Mr. Chairman.
So the recommendation from the planning commission was to...
Can I approve it, sir?
All right, you have... You've heard the recommendation from staff. Is there a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like my motion to approve it. So I'd recommend it.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Ellington, seconded by Commissioner Wilder to approve this rezoning request. Any other discussion? Hearing done, Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have a rezoning request, 2020-06. An applicant is Chamkura. I hope I'm saying that right. He's requested rezoning of 202 West Moore's Crossing Road from R2 to C1. It's approximately 0.67 acre in Tade Creek Heights, so it could be neighborhood. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Tell me.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor of open the public hearing? The public hearing is open. I understand we have...
We have several comments, and he also wants us to call him, from my understanding. You want me to call him before I read the comments?
Uh, sure.
Pronounce it nine for me, Doug.
Mr. Chamkura.
I'll let you talk. I'll let you.
Mr. Chamkura?
Hello?
This is...
Mr. Chamkura?
Yes, this is Doug Courier, and we are now live in the public hearing. If you turn down, if you're watching this, if you turn down the sound on your computer so that we don't hear the 20-second delay, and you're now part of the public hearing, if you'd like to make a statement, and you may be asked some questions.
Yes, sir. First of all, of course, traditionally, looking at this rezoning, I would really prefer that I'm really trying to get a grocery store. I'm trying to make sure I'm trying to visit, to be accessible to the community and the property will... So I would do anything.
Okay, sir. Okay, so, all right, well, I guess we'll just move on then to other comments, and we have some that were written in?
Yes. Jason, you have the time?
Yep. Just give me 20 seconds.
We shouldn't take any more moments, guys.
Okay.
This is from Leroy in Rose Ivy. We are opposed to the rezoning of the property at the intersection of Moore's Crossing Road and County Road for a convenience store and laundromat. We wholeheartedly believe that a potential commercial property won't be beneficial to our community, in our community. We are homeowners that pay property taxes, and our community should be the most important one. After watching the rezoning meeting a few times on YouTube, I'm convinced that our community was definitely not... Our community was definitely not represented correctly. Before the meeting was held, we were not told that we could leave a phone number to be called. We were only told to email our complaints and that they would be read. The interns should have been, should have never presented something as serious as this to the committee without being fully prepared. I honestly believe that an issue as serious as this should have been handled more professionally. In my opinion, the committee members weren't concerned about what our community wants. They rushed through the topic nonchalantly. Actually, they spent one hour or longer on the zoning issue before this one, and only 14 minutes on this one. The emails were not... Were only acknowledged but not read by the committee. The man on the left, I assumed they were the emails, held them up to pass down. The lady turned her head, and no one actually took the time to read them. The man laughed and laid them down. The man on the end said that the property was an eyesore, and I totally agree. We were unaware that the property was for sale because the for-sale sign was never placed on it. The owner of the property did not check in our community to see how we, as homeowners, feel about putting a laundromat and a convenience store in our community. If he wants to build a house on the property, we have no problem with it because it's a potential. We welcome him to our, to this community, but to put a laundromat and a convenience store, we do not want or need it. No one acknowledged the disadvantages of rezoning the residential property to commercial property. As a matter of fact, these businesses will affect our property value. This will cause the traffic to be high. Our community is fairly safe, but this could increase the crime rate. Also, this type of business could create areas of drug transaction. Finally, most homeowners have lived in this community for several years and have no need for a laundromat at all. Also, where would the laundromat water be draining to? The issue with the trucking company across the street has not been resolved, and there are no... There, and here, we go again with this. If you rezon the property, then the trucking company will be expected to be rezoned commercial also. It is in your hands to say no to this rezoning. The rezoning committee did not handle this properly. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Leroy. This one is from Shirley Walker. Good morning. I'm coming to you about the building where someone is asking that the area be changed to commercial. This is the entrance way to the Potato Creek Heights area. I am a retired teacher here in Upson County. We do not need no... We do not need a store nor laundromat in this area. We have a lot of senior citizens like myself, not any, a lot of noisy, busy interruption in our peaceful, quiet subdivision. Please keep this area as it is. Thank you. You have blessed that, Shirley Walker. Angela Snee. Good morning. How are you? This email is in regards to the proposed rezoning on Moore's Crossing Road. I am completely against this rezoning in the area in which I was raised in, and my parents, uncle, and many, many family and friends still live. This community is made of many seniors who do not need nor want these businesses in their community. These potential businesses could bring about negative traffic to the area and potential crime. I would say that at least 95% of the community have washers and dryers, so there is no need for a laundromat for this, for a laundromat for this middle-class community. I ask the committee to vote no for this rezoning and protect this quiet community. There are at least five other stores within four to five mile radius. Therefore, the community does not need another one in their community. Thanks in advance for listening, and we hope that you will take the desire of the community to its consideration, as stated. Most of these individuals are senior citizens, so they do not need or do not use computers to send emails, nor are they getting out in this pandemic because they are at high risk of COVID-19. Therefore, just because they are not there does not mean that they are not against this rezoning. Thanks, and please feel free to comment. Contact me if you have any questions. Angela Walker Snee. And this is from Ms. Clara Varnah. Good evening, Commissioners. We, the homeowners of the Potato Creek Heights subdivision in Upson County, would like to thank you for hearing the voices of the residents in the community before considering and rendering a decision on the rezoning of 202 West Moore's Crossing Road from R2 to C1. This subdivision was established in the 1960s or earlier as a residential and should stay that way. Like everyone, the families that have moved here have worked hard to experience the American dream of living in a peaceful, quiet, and safe, secure home. Our dreams and lifestyles should not be altered because Mr....
Chamkura.
Chamkura failed or decided not to check the zoning code of this, for this property before purchasing it. To think that it's okay to alter the lifestyles of others for professional gain is not good. We, the community, welcome him to build a home on the lot that he purchased, therefore maintaining the residential zoning designated for this lot. Most of the homeowners here are retired, just like other subdivisions in the city and the county. We don't need the noise or the heavy and unwanted traffic that a convenience store or a laundromat would bring to this area. There are no other subdivisions in the county that are surrounded by five convenience stores within less than a five-mile radius. Mr. Comer, I'm sorry.
Mr. Snee.
The owner. Would not, the applicant would like to... A six in addition to the laundromat that would be, that would be, that be the first thing that you see upon entering the subdivision. The applicant stated that the neighborhood would be his primary market, and it would widen the subdivision. It would have been a good idea for him to canvass the neighborhood and speak to the people and ask for feedback. There are more than three residents here. There are no more than three residents here. As I canvassed that neighborhood with petition, that were, there were at least eight other people that thought it would be okay, who needs convenience stores on each corner. We, as a community, have come together and signed a petition of 141 residents that are saying no to the laundromat and convenience store. In the neighborhood, we sell again early, and a business with operational hours from 6:00 AM until 9:00 AM would be conducive to showing consideration of the surrounding neighbors. These businesses should be in a commercially zoned area. There are potentially other neighborhoods in the city that would welcome this laundromat and convenience store. However, this is not the neighborhood. The safety of these residents and the neighborhood is the utmost importance. Most of the convenience stores are just hangout, are just a hangout place for back rooms or floor space for illegal gambling machines. No sites at gambling machines to win store credit for food or lottery ticket. You can purchase those items with money, you can purchase those items with the money you're feeding into those machines. It is already difficult and dangerous for some residents to get out of their driveways due to heavy volume of traffic and total disregard for the speed limit on Moore's Crossing Road. Don't forget the environmental issues. We have already, we already have low water pressure in this area. Since the area is not on a city sewer system, we would like the abundance of water. Ooh. On the city sewer system, where would the abundance of water from the laundromat flow? There were lots of issues brought up at the planning committee meeting, but yet it was recommended for approval. I have driven miles around the city and the county and cannot find a subdivision that has been impacted by commercial businesses taking away and invading a family environment for personal gain. Why this one? Don't discount the dreams of the residents of Potato Creek Heights subdivision while fulfilling the American dream of others. What is it that these businesses can bring to our area to improve it? It will bring negative factors and unwanted additional stress and trash thrown on the road. Look at other areas where these businesses have been placed. This subdivision is just as important to us as the ones on the other side of town and in the county. Walk in our shoes and see what we see. Honestly, would a neighborhood filled with the convenience, with convenience stores and a laundromat be a place you would want to come home to? Would these businesses be welcome to your subdivision? We don't live in a perfect world. We have problems. Things are broken, but we don't need additional stress out there, out here. Thank you for your time on behalf of the 141 residents of Potato Creek. Sign and seal the petition. Clara Varnah.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. All right, so we've had all the comments. Is there a motion to close the hearings portion?
Someone?
Your second? All in favor? Hearing's closed. Mr. Courier?
Yes, sir. As you heard, the applicant is Snehit Chamkura for 202 West Moore's Crossing from R2 to C1. That is the request to allow operation of a convenience store and a laundromat. The acreage is a little over a half acre. There are, you could call it, three buildings, I guess. One was a former service repair garage. One was used as a single-family home and also a retail store. You'll see in the staff report the various sizes and the years that some of these buildings were there. You'll see, this is the history of businesses being there from '92 to '93, '95 to '97, '99, 2008. An occupation tax was paid by L&amp;J Contractors from '96 to 2006. An occupation tax was paid by the sports club. And from 2000 to 2003, occupation tax by Potato Creek Convenience Store. So you can see there's a very lengthy history of this sort of business at this location. The zoning in the area, C2 is right across the street, R2, the single-family, and apparently there's some AR in the area. The R2, this is what the current zoning is and what the residential portion of the neighborhood is. There's the description of that. C1 is intended to establish and preserve small business areas of a limited nature that serve primarily the residential neighborhood in which they were, are located. That's different from the C2. Where this building to be rezoned, the site, there are some areas where it would not meet the setback requirements, also the size of the buildings, et cetera. You can see there in red where they would be potentially inconsistent. Again, the general review standard required by the state law, as well as our ordinance, to test proposals like this against. The staff analysis, again, the request is for a convenience store in one of the buildings, as well as a laundromat. That third, very small building would be used for storage or something like that. These are existing buildings, which, I think, if you look at the history, have probably not been used about 12 years, at least not legally with paying occupation tax. Potato Heights Creek would be, Potato Creek Heights would be the expected market for this area. We try, you know, it would be a neighborhood scale type of use. There is C2 across the street, and of course, we've got the non-conforming uses across towards the river that were discussed in some of the comments, so you actually have more intense uses currently ongoing, although at least one of them in litigation. So the staff recommended approval based on the following. C1 is specifically designed as a zoning district to serve local neighborhoods. It consists, consists in certainly, and less intense than the uses closer to the river, and you do have C2 right across the street. R2, this is a busy intersection. I don't have traffic counts, but generally speaking, this is generally a less attractive location at a corner for a single-family residential unit, rather than some sort of a business like this, which would buffer the rest of the neighborhood. Planning commission also heard this issue at its July 13th meeting. They recommended approval for O with one member missing. They recommended two conditions. One, that all structures must be brought up to current building codes, and two, that the operating hours be limited to 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. This is the aerial. This is a 2020 aerial. May be difficult to see. The main building is right here in the middle, and then back here, this would be the laundromat, and then this would be the very small building that would probably be for storage. Here's the zoning in the area. There's the Chamkura property. You can see immediately across the street, you've got C2. As a matter of fact, you've got an agenda item tonight for alcohol license at that location for, I believe, it's the Yee's Grocery. Then across the street, you see the M1C, which is what was the grading company, and then the C2C, which is technically on the other side of the river. So there's certain commercial in this area and uses of a more intense use of zoning that is more intense. This is what the building looked like some time in the past. There's already been some improvement and cleanup of the property. It appeared that somebody, a vagrant, had been in, in the property. You may have those photos in your staff report. They are not in my presentation. You can see the condition of these buildings is greatly deteriorated. Again, the building in the front would be the convenience store, or one to the right. In the back would be the laundromat. And this is that very small building, which I guess they might use for storage or further uses. And this is what's across the street, the former grading company. We believe they have moved from this location. And then the property that's under litigation now. That concludes my staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to have any questions, Mr. Courier or Mr. Chamkura?
The... Yes, sir.
The... Can I look at, we need more time, the slide on what it means and what doesn't mean.
Sure.
Right there.
I assume they're all in. There we go. So you can see that minimum heated space is supposed to be 1,008, and those buildings are far smaller. You can tell just looking at it, they're pretty small buildings. So 1,008 would be the minimum if they were building a brand-new store. Heated space. And you can see the front yard setback. I think it actually would be 35, not 100. There's a double front yard setback on arterial roads. I don't think this would be considered an arterial road, so 35 feet would have to be that. It looks like we do meet at least 40 feet there, so we exceed it. Probably that 100 foot wouldn't apply. Now, we do have problems, obviously, with side yard setback, required to be 15. You've got one at 5 feet, but you've got the other one at 27, so one meets it and one doesn't. Rear yard's supposed to be 35, and it's only 27 feet, so basically, it looks like you've got square footage where you're not quite as large as you should be, and you've got setback issues. Trying to meet the...
So if there wasn't any buildings on this lot, you could actually build a building too.
And you can see it's not that far off.
Any other questions? Any other questions? The... One of the comments, two of them actually spoke to the system on a septic system.
Yes. To 1,000 square foot, 1,000 gallon tanks.
2,000 gallon tank.
Yeah, well, to 1,000.
About to 2,000.
I, this was an issue that came up and I had heard concern about it. So I talked to Mr. Chamakura specifically about this today. He may have additional information. He basically feels that in discussing with public, the public health department as well as the contractor, that the work could be done to allow the flows that would potentially come. Of course, calculations would have to be determined based on how many machines were put in there. So there's, you know, there's some numbers that would have to be crunched. But that plan was going to cost him money, and he felt that obviously if he got turned down for the rezoning, he didn't want to invest that kind of money in developing a plan for something that he wasn't going to use anyway. So he believes it's possible there might be some numbers crunched, and they'd have to look at the tank size and again, looking at how many machines were put into the laundromat.
Chairman Allen, I have one question actually from Kerr.
Yes, sir.
Actually, from Commissioner Watson. Early on, when we were discussing this particular rezoning, I thought that there was a discussion that the applicant was going to demo both of those buildings and construct new. Is that no longer the case? And I guess maybe that's a question that the board may want to hear when they add it.
I don't have that answer, I don't.
Mr. Chairman Kerr, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
The question was, do you have any desire to demo the existing structures and construct something new?
Yes, sir, we do. We'd like to use, some of the walls are redesigned on the convenience store. So I would like to use those walls, but everything else I want to construct because the road's going to be new, then I want to expand those walls and all such things. But whatever shape that can be used, I would like to use that, but everything else would be new construction. Because it's a pretty old building, so I want to bring it up to city or county code to make sure that not only all the roads are cool.
Okay. All right. Do you have any idea of how much square footage you're looking at adding?
Uh, yes, sir. 40. We are planning for 40 to 60 building. So the convenience store is, it has the full, it's part of the divided intersection inside, so I have to take down those walls and kind of make it a hall, one room, so that it can be a store because it is currently having, it has different rooms inside the building. So I have to just make it like one huge room for business, for the store.
I have a question. Does he have any assurance that two 1,000 gallon tanks would be sufficient for a laundromat? Did Commissioner Wilder ask if you had some assurance that the capacity for your septic system would handle a laundromat?
Uh, yes, sir. So 2,000 gallons at each time, I'm ready to follow the county code and more than 70 tanks. If it is not possible to add more than 70 tanks, I'm ready to go along with the mission. But I will make sure there's enough septic tank capacity to visit first property mission I've been considering since this county. And that I can make sure following the course of everything.
Doug, do you know where the septic system's located on this part?
I do not. Supposed to tell where it is, probably.
Point six, seven, six.
You can't get that much further.
No, that's my concern.
Not having it in the parking lot.
Right. And by the setbacks, you can...
Okay. Was there ever been a laundromat there?
Not based on the occupation tax records that I've done research from the staff report.
Is there a... Well, I'll just say this before I ask for a motion. I mean, it is great to see some interest in coming in and cleaning up that parcel. I mean, I grew up in the neighborhood, not too far anyway. I used to be out of the corner, and so I remember the history of a lot of that stuff. It goes back many, many years ago. So, I mean, but it did. Was there a motion on this application?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to deny this request.
I have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second. If you can make a comment.
We'll get a discussion. So I have a motion to deny by Commissioner Wilder, seconded by Commissioner Watson. Discussion.
Yeah, you know, for me and just being my district, I think this is a scenario where I got to take a personal opinion out of the equation. And due to the large, you know, we have 140 people signed up for a petition, and I feel like I represent my district as a whole, and this is a big portion of my district. And so I'm making my decisions now based off of the majority of that neighborhood and being opposed to it.
I think that, you know, it sounds to me like Mr. Chairman Kerr has a good vision for this site. I think this might be more of a public relations type issue with the neighborhood. I think if everybody out there understood and we understood what the actual vision was going to be and what the actual cleanup would be, we'd probably give it a little more power. But I understand exactly where Commissioner Watson's coming from. So is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Chair Allen?
Yes. Mr. Chairman Kerr, thank you for your interest and good luck today. Okay, moving on. Public hearing for a special exception in AR zoning district for a deer camp, 210 acres property located at 105 Pleasant Road, Route, and Gatesville. The applicant is Ms. Jennifer Shirley. So at this time, we'll, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So do.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor? Public hearing is open. Any comments?
No, I haven't surely found a call, but no comments or anything. She did, so.
I'm just here. Like I told somebody in the previous meeting, it was so hard to hear on the phone. I was just going to sit in, and that way if I had questions, I could answer them.
Which, man, okay. So we have no one signed up to make comments. So is there a motion to close the hearing?
So do.
Okay, all in favor? Public hearing closed. It was moved in second.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, sir. This is a special exception, not a rezoning. Ms. Shirley represents as the managing partner, White Oak Ridge LLC. They've requested approval from Upton County for a special exception for an AR zone deer camp on a very small portion of 300 penn acres, the actual camp itself. The AR zoning does this deer camp. It's one of those special exceptions. It is unique, and it has a list of conditions, things that it must meet. I will go into that later, and that is part of your staff report. The camp is in a couple of pieces divided by county right-of-way roads. The east and west sides of Pleasant Road, Road, and north and south Kendall Road is where this property is located. On-site is heavily wooded, and most of this area is heavily wooded. There is some planted pine and some single-family dwellings, but mostly heavily wood in the area. These are the requirements A3J that are actually listed as requirements to be met by a deer camp. We have never pulled from the owner. In this case, the applicants do own the property. There is a permission. You'll see the approval for the driveway pipe from the road department is part of the application. They are not proposing any privies, so you don't have any correspondence from the health department. You do have the number of spaces there. Again, there's, we don't have any discussion with setbacks, dimensions, what the actual design of the park would be. I'm unaware of what the power pole, whether a permit's been pulled for that, but we do have the design of the power system on the plan that we do have. And of course, this can only be for campers, no permanent buildings, although we do have a permit and probably some construction by now of 1,080 square foot pole barn being built. The P, the fee has been received. Again, I'm not quite sure where we are with the power pole at this point. And the other I and J are ongoing conditions. One, that campers may not stay there and be used as permanent dwellings. And that any changes J have to come back, any changes in the plan have to come back to the planning commission and board commissioners. There are unique and different general review standards for special exceptions. Those standards have to be used by the planning commission and the board of commissioners. There was some additional information that I thought might be useful to receive from the applicant. Staff analysis basically finds that, like most uses, there's nothing innately, you know, problem with this deer camp. It all depends on how well it's managed and maintained. So it can be a very good deer camp, and we certainly have examples of very bad deer camps, how they are on this condition. So there's no reason to believe that this would be a bad one, that it would violate any of the standards. Staff recommended approval. And the planning commission at its August 10 meeting also recommended approval. For O, again, one of the members was missing. They did not request or suggest any additional conditions outside the normal A3J that we just discussed. This is the aerial photograph. You see the larger area, which I presume would be the hunting ground. The camp is where you see the asterisk there to the left on that smaller portion of the property. This is sort of difficult to see, but you do have this in your packet. This is actually, I guess, the electrical design, but it shows you the general outlay. I understand from Ms. Shirley that this is a wooded area. It's not developed yet until the camp has been approved. And that concludes the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? So it's up to, just up to the end of Kendall Road, Kendall and Pleasant. Are you going to pad the sites or gravel the sites or...
We'll put gravel in there, yes, sir. And this is already an existing deer camp area, but we bought it, and so because it's under the ownership, they don't want us to go through and do this. So I mean, it's already cleared where campers were there previously. It's, you know, just a little cleared out in the woods.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the special exception based on staff's recommendation.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Shirley.
Actually, I'll get a letter in the mail to you, basically repeating what you just heard, but you approve.
All right. Thank you all so much for your time.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing for a beer and wine and pack sales license for Mr. Palma Green on behalf of Deeds Grocery located at 185 North Cross and Grove. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So do.
Your second?
Second.
Any motion? All in favor? Public hearing's open. Any comments on this?
No.
Comments, mail in or some, saying that... Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So do.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Mr. Kerr? Or, I'm sorry. Jennifer, you want to... Let me, Jessica.
Who many J?
J.
This is a new store, so this is the first time they've had a beer and wine application. They have met all the requirements from those. They meet all our requirements, no background, nothing on background check, so.
Chairman Allen, I'll also add that there were several inspections done. It failed, I think, the first time the building inspector had noted, among other things, some ADA items in the bathroom, but then it was finally cleared and okayed August 21, 2020. Looks like the building inspector went three times in the, July 10, August 12, and then August 21st, it was given the okay. Therefore, meeting or exceeding minimum requirements, staff's recommendation is approval.
Okay, so you have a staff recommendation for approval. Is there a motion?
Public motion to approve based on staff's recommendation.
Your second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Watson, seconded by Commissioner Wilder. Any further discussion on this? All right. I'll just say it. This is one of those convenience stores that we, you know, is in that vicinity of the one we just turned down, so... Just making a point. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
No.
Chairman Allen?
No. So I suggested this, and it's, does it pass? Not denied, motion approved, so it can be filed again or that it's dead.
I think that's... Yeah, I think that. And I'll defer to counsel, but I'm certain that that's a denial.
Doesn't have to be answered, Jim.
That's a denial, yeah. That's correct.
All right. Okay. Next, is a... Public hearing for a beer and wine and pack sales license for Mr. Good Tuca. Hope I said that right. On behalf of Gil Paul Trading LLC, doing business at BMR Food Mart located at 1998 Highway 19, or Suite D. Open the public hearing and bid a motion.
So do.
Your second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ellington. All in favor? Mr. Ellington? All right. All right. So Jessica?
This is also a new location. They never had a beer and wine license here either. As stated before, they had several inspections.
Hang on a second. I think I just messed up. We opened the public hearing?
No comments.
No comments. All right, I'm sorry. My bad. Is there, no one signed up making comments? Just any comments in? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So do.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Okay. All right. Now, I'm sorry. I called it myself this time. There you go.
I should have called it. So first time they have been... Um, so, first time they had a beer and wine application, they had three inspections as well, one on six eight, seven ten, they had the final inspection on eight four, where they were in compliance. No other issues as far as the application, background check was fine.
Okay. So, staff recommends approval.
Yes, based on, do you have any additional?
I have a question. I mean, you know, I think it's kind of go in that little complex there, it's easily, it passed by there, you don't go to them, but there was a church right there on the end, did, did, what happened to that?
That's news to me.
On the same roof.
I did not see any church. That's news to me.
They were operating as a counseling center, or is that news, a church operating as a counseling center?
Yep. They had churches there on Sunday, I could see the courts there. So, I, I'm just curious, saying they may be gone, I, I'm just saying, hey, I would, but we, we might, we might sure we, you know, prove me wrong, and we can be right, but.
Mr. Chairman, there's a, the building and zoning inspection sheet is in there where the distance was confirmed, I guess by Mr. Curry, but I don't see a date as to when that inspection was done.
Like I said, it could have, but there was a church there on, on the far end of that building.
We could double check, I mean, that's news to me, I mean, I was in that parking lot several times and didn't see any evidence of a church, but I could have missed it, I guess. I didn't look at each individual suite, there were four or five empty suites.
There is.
Is there, is there a motion?
A motion, we'll table this, so we can get further information.
We'll table this until the next meeting, which will be, um, 22?
Twenty.
Twenty second?
Yes, twenty seconds.
So, I'll be meeting on the 22nd. So, motion to table, is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Yes, you have it, it's, okay, favor. Okay, moving on. Item five, public comments. Do you have any public comments for tonight?
Yes, we do have one public comment.
Okay.
Um, this is from Andy Chastain, Tax Commissioner. I understand from recent public comments they made by a board member that he was bothered by the negative talk earlier this year about the county's general fund balance and that some of the comments were not factual. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to expound on these comments from a taxpayer point of view and present some facts and truths about taxes and the general fund balance that has grown substantially over the last three years, mostly due to property tax revenue. It seems to be big pain by this board member for the public to hear is filled with half truths and not all the facts when it comes to taxation and the fund revenue growth. It's my opinion that the comments made earlier this year were not made to be negative, but in order to shed some light on the amount of excess tax that our citizens are being charged while the funds, while this fund counting to grow. So, let's start with some facts and truths. It's a, it's a truth that Hudson County has for the, for two years in a row, has once again been declared to be in the best shape financially that it has been, been in for almost 40 years, which has put the county in great, in a great position to have, to not have to borrow money to operate on a, operate on any longer. It is a fact that the board has made some wise decisions to benefit our community, such as the teeth blocks to pay growth and saving money in expenditures where it could. It's also true that the board does not set the value of property, but it is a fact that they do set the millage rate that ultimately determines the amount of taxes paid by our citizens. So, yes, the amount of tax, county taxes that are being, that are built lie solely at the feet of the commission, of the county board, because the board does have the ability to roll the rate back or increase it, or increase it at will based on budget needs or to provide tax relief, such as what was done in 2012. It is also fact that just because a governing authority rolls back millage rates to meet the standard required by the state of, of the state not having a tax increase, does not mean an individual's taxes will not go up, especially in a year where there is a big revaluation in property, such as this year. What bothers me is that, is that some board members comment in a way that arbitrates a tax increase due to the reav, to this reav, revaluation, when in essence, taxes are ultimately controlled by the millage rate the board chooses to set. Another fact concerning the county no longer borrowing money to operate on fund growth, it is a fact, this, it is a fact, the year-end balance for 2018 was 8.3 million. Of course, this was after the majority of property tax revenue came in, and that was after a year-end balance of 6.6 million in 2017, which reflects a growth of 1.7 million. So, we moved to 2019, when there was no money bar to operate on during the year, and the end of the year balance, according to documents proved, exceeded 10.8 million. So, by doing simple math, the fund grew over 2.5 million by the end of 2019, or first part of 2020. Again, this growth occurred in a year when we borrowed no money to operate on. My question here is, what was that growth due to? Did the board save that much in expenditures, or was it due to taxpayers' revenue? My guess is tax revenue made up the biggest portion of that growth. So, we have board members that are bothered by all the facts not being told when someone addresses an issue of concern that involves a tax, taxpaying citizen. What bothers me is that we have board members that relaying all, we have board members not relaying all the facts properly when they make public statements or dealing in half truths in order to deflect the spotlight when it comes to taxation. What else bothers me is that all, is that with all the growth in revenue clearly due to taxpayer revenue, that the board has not looked into idea, into the idea of giving our taxpayers some real tax relief, such as, such as higher homestead exemptions on county taxes, or maybe some type of tax relief and rollbacks, as was done in 2012. Hudson County has one of the lowest homestead, homestead exemptions for homeowners in the state.
That's hot.
Okay. All right, well, all right. Any other public comments?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have the August 25th regular meeting minutes, the acceptance of the executed pastoral land leases, and the approval of revisions for the cater pair of real land agreement. Is there a motion to the consent?
Salute.
Is there a second? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes, okay, thank you. We'll get these, face this question on these leases, I mean, have they, they've been executed, they've come in?
And both tenants have paid.
They've paid.
So, they're off and running.
So, they're off and running, good. All right, thank you. Thank you, Pastor. All right, new business, comments, Jessica?
Mr. Chairman, I have two comments, and they're both follow-up items from the work session from last week. Item number one, and I'll, I'll forward this to the board via email, but I'll go over some of the findings very quickly. One of the things that you asked staff and engineering staff to report back on was the difference, the net difference in asphalt treatment versus surface treatment on the list of roads where we allowed for an option, and I'll just remind the board very quickly that those were Roland Road, West Jefferson Street, Kim Street, Reeve Street, Patricia Street, Bridge Creek Road, Lindsay Road, and Willis Road. There was a total savings between surface treatment and asphalt of $472,000, or roughly 34% savings over the asphalt treatment. And those savings on the individual roads kind of run anywhere between 26 and 50%, just depending on the, on the section of road that we're talking about. So, we do have that information for you, I'll, I'll pass it around, so you can see in, in each case where the, where the savings are coming in from what road. Is there anything else you'd like to see in that report before I move on to my other item?
We are, we plan to move forward on that at our next meeting.
On the 22nd, that's right. And I think engineering staff has about got their report finished, so. Just as a reminder, the apparent low bid was $4,996,96854, which was roughly 12% under estimates. And that includes those alternates for Kendall Drive, Apple Wood Lane, and a series of roads where we strike them. Item two, Mr. Chairman, again, a kind of a holdover issue from the work session. As you may recall, I reported that we were working with not only our district engineer, but Jack Reed from our, from our LMEC office. We asked for some additional assistance on the approach to the Hobbit Road Bridge on the county line in Otawa County. They had asked our engineer to prepare estimates and, and the scope of work, we provided that to them, and that came back from EMC at roughly $35,000, so that was included in the overall bid package that, that we opened last week. We then got some further communication back from Department of Transportation asking us to look into a different method of stabilizing that approach, using some sort of deep injection process, for which we were then asked for our engineers to get estimates on that, which I am in receipt of now, and those estimates are roughly $22,000 versus the 35 that was bid in that line item from receipt.
That's not the, that's not the.
That's right, and, and again, I was just in receipt of it before the meeting, I'm going to send this out to all the board members, but it would involve drilling a significant number of holes, and they inject this substance to literally raise the surface of the road. The contractor would not necessarily guarantee that the asphalt would stay intact when the process was finished, but I'll send it for your review. This was provided back to GDOT earlier today, so we're going to get their feedback on it. You know, we're sort of leading them, you know, we're letting them know that our preference would be to do a full depth reclamation, which is what the engineers had, had called for, because we feel like the price difference is negligible, and there were too many unknowns as a result of this methodology. So, we sent that back in to an email to the GDOT staff, and we're just waiting to hear back on it, so.
Hey, what comment? I, I mean, can we get some specifications on that product, too? I mean, if that's the route that they decide to go on, I'd like to kind of know a little bit. I've never seen that product being used, so I'd like to know the life of it, and just some general specifications.
I'll send out to the board the, it's about a 10-page proposal. There are some general specs in there, which I don't know that they'll answer, you know, at a high level detail, but I'll share that with you. If you have any additional questions or concerns that you want me to forward to GDOT as it relates to that, that process is up there, but I'll get that out to you after the meeting. That's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Jessica?
You're welcome. Happy belated birthday.
Thank you, I know, I look older already. Ashley, you have anything for us tonight?
No, thank you very much, sir.
All right, hope you have a great weekend. All right, um, Mr. Wilder?
I would like to make mention that we're currently working on a chip grant for Hudson County, not, it's not geared to a, geared toward a target, a specific neighborhood or location, but it's a community, chip, community home improvement project, is, is for, it can be jumped around in any portion of the county, it's not necessarily specific to a particular neighborhood, but that is, that is being worked on, and I would get the grant writer to come in and make a presentation once this process is, a little bit further along, I talked with her today, and she said, you know, the paperwork has to be done, has to be submitted by January, and so she has a little bit of time to work, and she can come in and do a presentation, if we so desire, I can, I can indicate a reason why I'd come in.
Sounds good. Is that it?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, as I like to commit, Commissioner Watson tonight, and I've been faced with it several times in the past, because, you know, we're elected by a majority of people in our district, with this as the chairman, and, you know, we have to listen to our constituents, and when we have people calling us, reaching out to us, that's why we're here, and it would be easy for us to sit here and vote our conscience. But we always like citizens' input, we may not always agree with it, but the majority rules, so, you know, I, I take that exact same stance, and I'm sure all the other commissioners should take that stance, but I, I do commend you, Commissioner Watson.
Okay, so, with that?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I appreciate that, and it, I mean, to your point earlier, Mr. Sean McCura, I mean, he, he was trying to, I mean, he, he went through the proper steps, I had numerous conversations with him, and he was, you know, potentially going to provide a structure that looks a lot better than what's currently there, so it is a hard decision, but, you know, like I said, it's a majority of my constituents thought otherwise, so, but other than that, you know, I would just say, as the, I think the Knights had their first football game Friday, and as sports are, are college and fall sports are picking up, please just, you know, still think about the pandemic and continue to social distance, and, you know, it's, it's easy to put it behind us, but it's not behind us yet, so I would just say, keep that in mind, move forward, good fall.
Personally, experiences recently, not within my family, what I can tell you is, we're a long way to go, this pandemic, it's, it's here, and it's still affecting a lot of people in our community, and we just got to be mindful going forward. So, I have just a couple of things, and I don't, Doug will throw you on the spot, and Jason will throw you on the spot, because I rode by it again today, and I just, the car lot at Harp Road, and I mean, I rode out there with Jeremy, spoke to the owners, and I mean, I just, I do think we need to take a deep dive at what our work says, I mean, defining a car lot, you know, to me, when you say use car lot, I can chill up and I can say, I want to buy that car right there, peel out the money, get the keys, sign B, and title it, and drive it off. Those vehicles out there, I mean, I've been by there in torrential downpours, and the windows are down. You know, I've got numerous complaints from folks in the neighborhood about the grass, I mean, they do get out there, weed the grass amongst it when it gets up pretty high, but it just, you know, what are we selling here? I mean, what is, what is a used car lot? And if it's something that we need to do to help you, help us clean that spot up, or find some sort of definition for that, that business up here, I mean, because to me, you go out there and, and, you know, it's like a pull apart, I mean, there, there are parts being taken off some of these vehicles out there, at least it appears to be, so, this is on our bankroll coming in, so, Jason, if y'all could just get back to it, anything that I could do to help, or if we just can't, if we just can't get there with our current ordinance, and. Anything that I could do to help, or if we just can't, if we just can't get there with our current ordinance, and I know we've got a lot on your plate, just, just let me know. But I, I do get plenty of discussion about that, that place. And I'm happy they're doing business out there. But anyway. And especially if we, if we have more car lots pop up, you know, we use only one tonight, there would be an ideal car lot, and if we wanted to be that, that type of car, or, you know. We got to fix that, if it's something that we need to do to fix it for, it's just a matter of us cleaning up things. Anyway. And Commissioner Wilder and I had a discussion last night, Jason and I had a discussion earlier today about Lincoln Park, just, we could just direct Jeremy down there, just to, we've gotten calls about care of Prince concerns down there. And I know we talked about it, but just putting it out there for the record. I had a special call meeting for the IDA tomorrow morning at 8:30. It'll be the first conversation with our economic developer, real partnership with the IDA, and talking about grant opportunities, urgent grant opportunities that we need to move on, so. Hopefully, we'll, we'll get some movement there with that aspect of what we hired Real Partnership to help us with.
Any other comments, concerns, or by the ways? Okay. We have an executive session for real estate. There will be no vote afterwards, so no action to be taken. So, with that, we'll entertain a motion to go into the executive session for real estate.
Ellington, Watson?
All in favor? We're going to go into the executive session.
And we were going to do that in, in the office.
This is the photo that we just taken a few weeks ago, so. It says Rustic Angler. She's been in a couple of different locations, so. Yeah, there's no church sign. Get to the shopping center?
Yeah, I need a file.
Do they have, do they, they don't have a place? They, they own that corner. Sure. We do it in the, in the, Jason's office? I, I miss that one. Yeah, they, 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 they do have a Jason's office.
Give me one second, because I'm gonna, I don't have the phone. Yeah, I have a key, but I don't have a couple of phones here.
I can lock that.
I can.
You are. Basically, now I gotta wait for my computer.
Are there any issues with septic tank owner?
Well, they think that there might be, it's not like that was part of the reasoning, but there had to be a calculation determine, you know, depending on how many washing machines were going to be in there, could those two septic tanks handle it? And they didn't have that answer yet, because he, he talked about talking to basically some.
Two separate?
Well, no, those are just what's already there. So, the question was, could those two septic tanks handle? And he didn't have the answer, because that was going to cost him money in case this happened. And so, now. I don't know if he owns it, but, yeah, he's here in the city. He talked about that at the planning commission, where he's got one of these that's off of a church, just south of here. Not sure which one. Might be that one.
Yeah, I was going back to it.
Yeah, I think this would then his second one in town.
But if he said he was going to demolish our buildings?
That's what he said, he would, well, he was going to keep the main one, that was the convenience store, but the two that were in the back, he said he was going to demolish.